You're live. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the work session. Today is Monday, October 28th, 2024. It is approximately 1:00 PM. I am Mayor Portemben Como. Mayor Enriquez is out of town at a municipal league conference today. We will start with a moment of silence for the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces as they protect our interests around the globe, as well as the courageous men and women of the Las Cruces Police Department and the Las Cruces Fire Department. Thank you. And just a little housekeeping, since it's just four of us today, hold your bio breaks, or we will have to take a pause in the meeting. First up today is jobs of the week. Sarah, come on up.
Good afternoon. Thank you. There we go. All right. For jobs of the week for October 28th, last week of October, we have the gas welding, gas systems welder for the city of Las Cruces that one pays $25.82 an hour and is a continuous posting at this time. We also have a grant development and compliance specialist. That one starts at $49,000 and is a continuous posting as well. We have a deputy program manager at Oasis Systems at White Sands Missile Range. That one, that posting closes on 11/20. We have several postings for Cablecom LLC, things, openings from billing specialist foreman, labor project coordinator, and there are several others that they have listed. So if you're interested in Cablecom, you'll need to check out the listings that are listed online. We have a dialysis patient care technician for US Renal Care. That one closes on the 17th of November. Also, a road technician one for Sunbelt Rentals. That one starts at 1845 and the posting closes on November 17th. And then, as always, you can find us on employernm.com. If you want to check out any of those postings, especially like the one that was listed, several openings for Cablecom, you can come down to the office at 226 South Alameda Boulevard. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, ma'am.
And next up is pets of the week with Carol Nielsen.
Good afternoon. I am Carol Nielsen, Digital Content Specialist with Animal Services Center of the Missy Valley. Our cat of the week is Noodle, number 80032, if you would like to look him up online. At almost four months old, I am at that perfect age where everything is a delightful mystery waiting to be explored. I'm not just about curiosity, though. I'm also a big fan of snuggles and purring. When I'm not on a little adventure, you can usually find me soaking up all the love I can get. I thrive on companionship. I would love to have a human or two who can shower me with affection. Let's make some wonderful memories together. And our dog of the week is Sammy, number 59108. I might be a little shy at first, but underneath this timid exterior is a heart bursting with love just waiting to shine. I spend a bit of time in shelter, and while I appreciate the care I receive, sometimes the hustle and bustle can be a bit overwhelming for me. If there is a lot going on, I can be a little shy and hesitant, but don't let that fool you. When I'm given the chance to enjoy some one-on-one time, my true personality starts to blossom. Let's take it slow together and create a bond that shines. And this coming weekend, we have our picnic with a pup. We're going to be doing a little bit of a Dia de los Muertos theme, and so we're honoring animals that have passed on and also celebrating the animals that we can still adopt. So we would encourage everyone to come on out and adopt a new friend. There's going to be food, music, and should be a good time. And as always, we are on social media. You can also visit our website for more information, any animals that you want more information on. And yeah, that's everything. Have a good day.
Thank you so much. First up on our work session agenda is item 3.1, overdose prevention center. We will be joined by Kaylin C. via Zoom, Athena Huckabee, and Philip Fouty, who are here.
Good afternoon. Is Kaylin available?
Let's see. Adrian is our Zoom guest.
I have not seen anybody pop into the Zoom participation as of now.
Okay. Can I check with her, or should I just riff until she shows up?
We can do the other item first and then come back to you if you want to get, if you want to reach out and...
I will do that. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for flexibility. Okay, 3.2, City of Las Cruces Economic Outlook. Dr. Monica Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Monica Torres, economist, economist with Economic Development, and I will give you an economic summary from the first quarter of fiscal year 25. During the first two months of the quarter, or the fiscal year, oh, wait, do something with... Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Torres. Maybe we'll just wait a little bit.
Do you want me to?
You can minimize it because we will just continue with your presentation.
Okay.
Since we've already started. Perfect.
So during the first two months of the first quarter of the current year, more people joined the labor force, employment remained pretty much the same, and the number of people actively looking for a job rose 18% to a total of 2.6,000 persons. The unemployment rate ticked up from about 4.5 from a previous year to 5.3. This was expected even the restricted policy environment in the nation. During the first two months of the fiscal year, the average listing price rose 1% from about $349,000 to $353,000. And according to the cost of living index during the second quarter of 2024, the city was about 11% less expensive than the average of the participating cities. During the first quarter of the year, current fiscal year, there were nine additional business registrations compared, as compared to the previous year, to a total of 158, 48. And in the nation, the average steady-year mortgage rate declined from about 7% to 6.5%, but remains about 3.7% before the pandemic. And the federal funds rate, which is the benchmark for other borrowing costs, was 350 basis points to a range between 475 to 5%. This is the first rate cut after a number of rate increases to tame inflation, which peaked in mid-2020 at 9%. The median rate is expected to be about 3.4% at the end of 2025. GRT revenue rose about 1.8% from about $32.2 million to $32.8. During the business months that correspond to the distribution month period, inflation grew 3%. On regards to match taxable gross receipts, which is a measure of economic activity where tax payments are matched to reported receipts, the oil industry sectors grew about 1.6% from about $1.02 billion to $1.04. The top three industry sectors that contribute to the match taxable gross receipts in the city are retail trade, healthcare and social assistance, and construction. Together during this period, they accounted for 57%. Retail trade is about 32%, healthcare 14%, and construction 12%. From these three sectors, retail trade and healthcare declined, while construction rose about 12%. From 18 sectors, 11 sectors grew on a year-over-year basis. Unclassified establishments grew at the fastest clip, while transportation and warehousing declined about 24%. In regards to cannabis, there was an excise tax. There was an increase of about 30%, which is about to a total of about $200,000. In regards to sales, sales decline, total sales declined about 4% from $9.3 million to $9 million. On one hand, we have adult use sales, which rose about 2.4% to a total of 6.2 million. On the other hand, medical use, which is about 30% of the total sales, declined about 15% to a total of 2.7. The average outlet per transaction dropped 12% from about $36 to $31, and the total number of tickets rose 10%. Looking ahead, in the nation, inflation has been trending down. There's been some softening on the labor market. The Fed Fund rates was 350 basis point in September, and the expectation is to continue to reduce this rate if incoming data comes as expected. Also, the current tax code will expire at the end of 2025. So these are among some of the factors that could impact household and business investment decisions. Therefore, we expect the economic road to continue, to continue, but at a more moderate pace as compared to recent fiscal years. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Torres. Any questions from council? Doesn't look like it. Thank you. Are there any questions from the public on this item? Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Dr. Torres. Okay, back to overdose prevention center. Kaylin C., do we have you on Zoom yet? It doesn't seem like it.
She said in about four or five minutes.
Okay.
We got confused between Mountain Time and Pacific Time.
Totally get it. Do you want to get us started with anything?
Sure, I can begin the introduction.
Great.
I really appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Please don't forget to state your name.
My name is Philip Fouty. It's spelled F-I-U-T-Y, and I'm here along with Athena Huckabee and a few others that are interested in putting forth a recommendation for an overdose prevention center. And I know as part of a way of, as an introduction to our guest speaker, just tell you a little bit about myself. I am, have been in New Mexico for 40 years, currently reside here in Las Cruces, and have been involved in providing harm reduction programming and services here in New Mexico for the last 25 to 30 years. I'm not here representing my current employers today, but am interested in putting together a pilot project for what we're calling overdose prevention centers. And I know that a lot of people know what that is, but when we're talking about that, it's, it's an intervention that has popped up out of a need for the, there she is, need to be able to address the crisis of overdose death in the United States and elsewhere, and has been very successful in Canada and Australia and Europe and other places, and most recently in New York, where Kaylin had the opportunity to be the operations manager and help get that program up off the ground. And so having someone with some experience with that, we thought would be a great way to introduce the topic. I would like to say, as a, I don't often lean into this in public context, but as a person in long-term recovery myself, my accidental career in harm reduction has had me kind of dragged and kicking most of the way. When I first succeeded in getting through rehab in the 1990s, I got recruited to work in harm reduction, providing needle exchange and outreach, and I thought it was a horrible idea. But after doing the work, which at that time was still very much focused on HIV prevention and hepatitis C, I, it gradually began to open my eyes about that. But in the early 2000s, when I was doing this work for the Department of Health, I, I was again, we started doing naloxone, and I was against the idea of nasal naloxone, and that ended up being the Narcan that we all are familiar with today. I was opposed to, most recently, to adulterant checking as an idea when we first, when my colleagues first started talking about it, and that's the work that I'm doing in New Mexico today, and when my colleagues started talking about overdose prevention centers in the middle of the last decade, I also thought that that didn't sound like a very good idea to me. But I have not been able to turn my back on the evidence and the experience of those doing the work. I think everybody likes the word crisis when we talk about substance user overdose, death, or fentanyl, because there's a lot of money attached to it. But people aren't really willing to look at the science and look at the evidence and be willing to take some risks and treat it as if it's really a crisis. So with that, I would like to introduce Kaylin, because I see her on there. She's going to talk for about 15 to 20 minutes, and then we'll
Hello, hello, hello.
be available to take questions.
Hi, Kaylin. Can you hear us? Mayor Portem, she had sent a chat, I saw pop up, that said she couldn't hear us. So I don't know if Adrian can work that out.
I don't know.
Hi, Kaylin. Can you hear us? Okay, great. I'm going to hand it over to you now. Please make sure to introduce yourself. Oh, now we can't hear you.
One second.
How's that? Better?
Yes.
That's better? You can hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Kaylin C. I'm the former senior director of programs for On Point NYC in New York City, where I oversaw the development and implementation of the two overdose prevention centers there. I was their senior director for eight years and did a lot of sort of community engagement work with law enforcement, sanitation, parks, elected officials, to ready both Washington Heights and Harlem for the implementation of overdose prevention centers in both neighborhoods. I left On Point in June and hauled my family across the country for a new position in Los Angeles, where I'm now on the leadership team for Homeless Healthcare Los Angeles, operating in Skid Row and MacArthur Park, working with stakeholders there to ready those neighborhoods for the implementation of overdose prevention centers and other harm reduction initiatives. Previously, before coming to the US in 2016, I worked in Vancouver, Canada for over a decade, building and operating harm reduction programs there. And that's just a little bit of my history, and I'm really thrilled to be here with you. I'm going to share my screen now. Let's see. Sorry, there's always a little bit of technical difficulties here. One sec. All right. Everyone can see this? Okay. So as mentioned, I was the lead on developing and implementing the first... Yes?
If you could just give us a minute, because there's this weird gray block right in the middle of your presentation. However, we also have it, so perhaps we can show it from here, and maybe Philip or Athena, one of you can, oh, never mind. Okay, you know what? We're trucking along. You may begin now.
Technical issues for the win. Okay. So I wanted to start with talking a little bit about some of the lessons learned through the launch of the two OPCs in New York City specifically. And the biggest takeaway for me, and certainly the partners that we worked with to launch the sites, was that an overdose prevention center, if implemented properly, really will effectively meet the needs of two stakeholder groups. Definitely the participants who rely on the site for their life-saving services, but they also have to meet, as well as they can, the various needs of the communities at large where they're located. So that's residents, families, businesses, city stakeholders, law enforcement, et cetera. The other lesson learned is that when we look at interventions like overdose prevention centers, this is sort of the great unregulated area of addiction treatment at the moment. And if the answer is no to a particular question around an OPC or the standing up of a harm reduction program, why is the answer no, and does it have to be? Some examples of that would be engaging paraprofessionals to help share the labor of some of the fallout of the overdose crisis, and I'll give some examples of that in a second, or really prioritizing a paraprofessional response to reduce the burden on emergency services and law enforcement officials. This sort of is related to the following point, which is that in this area of work, the law has always been slow to catch up to public health. What do I mean by that? There was a time where we thought it would be impossible to get medication-assisted treatment or buprenorphine into prisons, medication behind bars. There was no way the DEAs were ever going to allow this. And now, of course, it's a best practice. Another example would be naloxone. You couldn't get naloxone without a prescription. You couldn't administer naloxone if you weren't a clinician. And now, of course, you know naloxone is available over the counter without a prescription, and we are widely doing our very best to get naloxone into the hands of lay responders across the country. So this is another area where public health policy has been slow to catch up to the law. Syringe exchange is another obvious example. Law enforcement officials in New York City and in other jurisdictions that are adopting overdose prevention centers are kind of saying, and Tracy, Chief Tobin in New York City has famously said, you know, this is going to be a no-brainer in five years. We are just slow to catch up to the particular role that these centers play in the addiction treatment continuum of care for people who use drugs. Another lesson we've learned here in the United States is that co-location works best for an overdose prevention center. It's helpful if the OPC itself is located with other services that meet the acute and emerging needs of people who use drugs. This could be sterile supply distribution, medical care, mental health care, direct linkage into addiction treatment, and we'll talk about that more in a second, hygiene services, laundry showers, things like this. And the last thing, and I think everyone here knows this, that OPCs are not the panacea. They are not the single thing that is going to get us out of this crisis, but they are a really critical part of the solution. You know, the abstinence community doesn't like when we say this, but it's true. You know, harm reduction is the net. Harm reduction is what catches people who fall out of abstinence. So abstinence fails every single time, except for the one time it doesn't, and harm reduction is the net that catches people, keeps them alive, and ensures they have, you know, they have their life to try again, whether it be towards abstinence, maintenance, or whatever else they might be pursuing. So specifically related to the New York context, I'm going to focus on that for the purposes of this presentation, because I'm pretty new to LA still. What does On Point What does On Point do? I think many of you probably know this. But yes, we do operate two very busy safer consumption programs, but it does a lot more. We have two harm reduction hubs, one in Washington Heights and one in East Harlem. And that is where the OPCs are co-located with a bunch of other services I'm going to tell you about now. We also operate seven vehicles, including a mobile medical unit that also has safer consumption on it, really getting to the idea that if you're going to open an overdose prevention center, your outward-facing programming that is on the ground in the community, working with civic agencies and other stakeholders, is just as important as the OPC itself. They can't exist in isolation of each other. We operate three outreach and public safety teams, which has their own public safety hotline. I'm a big believer in the value of taking labor off of overburden plate and the way that harm reduction programs can do this. The public safety hotline is one example of this. In New York City, if you see someone overdosing or there's somebody who's setting up in your alcove of your business or there's syringe litter all over the playground, if you call 311, they're so overburdened, they can't respond, sometimes within 72 hours. We saw a real opportunity to be helpful there. So we opened our own public safety hotline that promised a response within an hour of receiving the call. So how can we take work off of overburden plates in other parts of the city infrastructure? We also operate our own harm reduction mental health unit, really acknowledging the gap between addiction treatment and mental health services and needing to close that gap to ensure people are getting the care that they need. Drug checking, we operate two mass spectrometers as well as seven testing strips, our own clinical and nursing care, including nurse practitioners, psychiatric nurse practitioners, MDs, registered nurses, et cetera, a holistic services program, a respite program for people who need to sleep during the day. We know that sleep or exhaustion is a major contributor to addiction and mental health. And if we can get people to sleep, that is hugely helpful. And then digging into that just a tiny bit more before we move on to the OPCs themselves, you can see that list here is really all of the other ancillary programming that supports the OPCs. And these are some pictures of what the sites in New York look like. So you can see that they're bright, they're big, they're dignified spaces where people who use drugs will want to hang out. So optics are very important when we do this work. We don't want the sites to look like people would expect them to look. If it looks like a shooting gallery, that's the kind of reception that we're going to get from law enforcement, emergency services, and other stakeholders in the neighborhood. If it looks like a well-run, clean, organized, and dignified space, then we're suddenly more welcome as a legitimate member of the larger community. I want to point out here too, before we move on, volunteers and jobs, you'll see that 40-plus there. What that means is that we really believe that one of the best things we can do for the neighborhood is create work for people in the neighborhood. So local jobs for local people. We are an income generator. We are providing jobs for people that need them. And we're also hiring into full-time salary positions with medical benefits, people who use drugs, directly from the OPCs and other programs. So really interrupting the cycle of addiction with other opportunities that are all coming out of the program itself. So this idea of closed-loop service provision. Yes, we want to deal with your immediate risk of loss of life because of your addiction. We're going to do some of that overdose prevention work. But we're also going to help you achieve some of the other goals that you want for yourself, like a job or reunification with family or stabilizing your mental health, these kinds of things. I'm going quickly, because I know that I think I've got about 20 minutes. And then I want you to ask questions if you have any. So for the OPCs themselves, a couple of things, just so we're all talking about the same thing. You can use any substance you want, in any quantity you want, via any mode of administration. So we're not policing substance or quantity of substance. And that's a unique feature of our OPCs in New York. We don't provide the drugs. Just want to make sure we're all clear on that. That's not the area of the industry that we're in. Although On Point and many of the harm reduction organizations across the United States are advocating for something called safe supply. So this would be prescription-grade alternatives that limit people's need to rely on the heavily adulterated and toxic drug supply in the United States. Really bringing them into the medical system via their use as opposed to continuing to kind of build the wall between their substance use and engagement with medical care. We do permit splitting in our sites, and that's also an unusual feature. This is one of our redresses to the encroachment of drug transacting activities and sort of boosting stealing, et cetera, from local businesses. This allows people to go in on a dose of drugs and split it in the site, which limits the amount of money they need to purchase that dose. There are any other questions about that? I'm very happy to answer them, but I'm going to move on from that point in the interest of time. We do provide safer use assistance, which means we help people understand the mechanics of safer injection, which gets at some of the downstream health impacts, including endocarditis, skin and soft tissue infections, and other things that can be quite ruinous to the person's physical body if they don't know how to administer drugs safely. So this is a public health intervention that often gets stuck in people's minds as an example of enabling, when for us, it's very counter to that. If I leave you here butchering your body and engaging in all of these safe practices, the likelihood that you could have a really detrimental sort of cardiac infection or abscess, possibly even lose a limb, goes up. And our job is to get you through a period of substance use as close to intact as possible, really taking care of the central nervous system and the cardiac system, the respiratory system, and then the rest of the person's body. No time limits in our sites. I don't want to be timed when I have a shower in the morning and get ready for work. And so too for our folks. They do not want to be timed when they're engaging this activity. This helps lower anxiety. And it also means we have a captive audience for the duration of the time that people are in our site. That captive audience is engaging in the one activity that is compelling them in that moment. And when you allow them to do that, by extension, they are more willing to engage in further care. So this is what we call booth-side care. It's not enabling, but when you acknowledge that the drug use is going to happen whether you like it or not, and they can engage in that activity, suddenly we can do a housing application in the booth at the same time. We can have a session with a psychiatrist. We can talk about buprenorphine. We can do wound care. All of this other stuff can be added on to an instance of use, that these are not mutually exclusive ideas. So the idea of booth-side care and eliminating the time limit to ensure that we have that captive audience. The average duration of a visit to our Washington Heights location is 58 minutes. That's almost an hour. The average duration of a visit to our site in Harlem is 35. When you consider that we see people multiple times a day, you start to get a picture of the unique level of access that we have to this population directly through the overdose prevention center itself. We train our staff to respond at the same level and in the same way as a registered nurse would in any drug-involved medical emergency, but they are not registered nurses. So this idea of giving clinical and professional training to paraprofessional people, I am telling you, the impact of this staffing strategy and approach has been instrumental to our success in the rooms and has been the number-one way that we've been able to take work off of EMS's plate and keep people out of the emergency room. I'm going to move past this, I think. There we go. Just a couple of pictures. This is the site in Washington Heights, if you haven't seen it. This is our consumer-led site. What that means is everyone working on the team in Washington Heights also uses the facility as well. So this is the peer or consumer-led model. Here's the site in Harlem. This is what would be referred to as the medical model. Everyone working on this team has some level of medical training or adjacent experience. Some are phlebotomists, certified medical assistants, former EMTs, and nurses. This program is a high-volume inhalation program. So on the bottom two squares of your screen, you can see an example of the inhalation room that can hold up to six smokers at a time. And then this site has eight booths. Since we launched in November 2021, we've registered over 5,000 people, 5,500 people to both sites. Harlem is the larger cohort by far, with over 4,000 people registered to that program. The sites have been used, this data is a little bit old. It's about a month and a half old, but they've been used over 160,000 times. So that's 160,000 instances of public drug use that have been picked up out of the public sphere and put down somewhere safe, private, and dignified with immediate connection into other care should that be of interest to people. I want to say too, that number, 5,500 people, every single one of them, 100% of them, has engaged with traditional treatment at least once, if not multiple times. Some of them, several dozen times. Our oldest participant in New York is in their 80s. And that individual in particular has been in and out of treatment multiple times. I want to broaden the addiction treatment continuum idea to include overdose prevention centers. This is a kind of treatment. We are engaging people who are previously not interacting with healthcare other than via the emergency room, usually through an overdose instance or some other egregious ailment or illness resulting from their drug use. We are interrupting that cycle. Safety, stabilization, and engagement. Once you have someone engaged in an overdose prevention center and no longer in the peak-and-valley survival drug use patterns that are very common for street and trench substance use, you start to develop a pathway towards stability. When you are more stable and practicing something that looks a little bit more like maintenance use, you are now a much better candidate for medical care, mental health care, housing, employment. You're a better parent to your kids. So much else becomes possible through the stabilization that these programs offer. But first and foremost, of course, the initial impetus for these sites is engagement and safety. Since launch, the team has intervened in, this is closer, I think this is upwards around 1,800 overdoses. No one has died. And I want you to notice there in the bottom, the green box, around 50 ambulance calls has resulted in nearly 1,800 overdose interventions. So this is the proof in the pudding. This is that high level of training for staff, really emboldening them with the skills that they need to intervene effectively so that we don't have to call 911 and activate that system. We are intervening in the entire overdose in a closed loop within our sites without having to engage external stakeholders. I'm not sure what it's like in New Mexico, but in New York City, if you call...
Kalen, you're starting to cut away in your... We can't really hear you. Maybe try turning off your camera?
Off the...
We were hearing you just fine, and then all of a sudden, we were not.
Let me try. Better?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you need me to... Anything? I'm going to keep going.
Now, you sound a little bit far away. Adrian, I don't know if you can help us with the tech issues? Can you say something else real quick, Kalen?
Absolutely.
Okay, I think we should be okay.
Am I okay to...
I'm not, I don't think so. I think you keep cutting out, unfortunately. Give us a second. We have someone here working on, figuring it out.
Kylie, can you go ahead and speak for me? Just count one to ten.
One... Five...
Okay.
Eight.
One second, everyone. All right, Kalen. It seems like everything on our end is okay. If you want to try, starting over from this one, not the whole thing, obviously, from this slide.
Okay. All right, just check.
Kalen, if you're speaking, we cannot hear you.
All right.
Maybe?
Hello?
Okay, go on.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can. Oh, you're on mute now.
All right, I'm just going to stop the share and then reshare to just reboot from where we were.
Okay. We can hear you now, pretty clear.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, we're still okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'm not sure where we lost each other here, but I just will highlight the few things I want you to take from this slide, which is really the approximately 50 ambulance calls that resulted from over 1,600 overdose interventions. And these are serious fentanyl adulterated overdoses that because of the high level of training we're giving the staff and our proximity to the incident that we're there the second symptomology presents, we're able to keep all of this out of the emergency room and off the plate of EMS. So we are not calling 911 at On Point unless indicated. We are really prioritizing resolving everything to the best of our ability on-site. For these 50 ambulance calls, this is often with people who have underlying medical conditions, are older, certainly people who have COPD. But the team has generally resolved the overdose itself. I also want to bring your attention to the red box, which is the opioid and depressant-involved overdoses. And you'll notice that naloxone was used... or on the precipice possibly of a more serious drug-involved medical emergency. We can go to the next slide. So what does this mean in terms of cost savings for emergency services, hospital, and the police? Going back to that idea of taking labor off of overburdened plates, it's estimated that the cost savings just from diverted EMS and ER admissions is over $30 million. We have an evaluation happening funded by the National Institute of Drug Abuse, and one of the aims is looking at the financial impact of an overdose prevention center. So this analysis will be happening as a part of the evaluation, and will be including cost savings to the New York City Police Department as a part of that evaluation. We haven't even calculated it because it's just a little off the charts, how much money is being saved by these systems. Next, please. So just talking very briefly again about the community engagement portion of the work and how it's really crucial that the outward-facing work mirror the work that happens at the overdose prevention center. So a well-run program will integrate within the tapestry of the neighborhood. What that means is that it's taking into account those dual sets of needs, the program participants who are going to use it, but also the communities where it's located. So the ambassadorship piece here is key. We partner really closely with law enforcement because we have to. The success of the site and our ability to do the work in community depends on it. We partner with NYPD in a couple of different ways. One, we go on joint outreach. Two, they don't want to be policing low-level hand-to-hand sales and people who are in the midst of a mental health crisis, we can take that work off of their plate. So law enforcement in New York actually asked us to develop a card demonstrating that we are working in partnership with law enforcement, that law enforcement could give to people who use substances on the street and say, hey, whatever you're doing here, don't do it here, go to On Point, and we can take you there. So really doing what looks like low-level diversion work with people who use drugs in community so that law enforcement doesn't have to do it. We have kind of dual crises unfolding in all of our cities and towns across the US, which is the addiction crisis and the mental health crisis. Law enforcement is getting hit from both sides, as is emergency services, and low-threshold harm reduction programming has a really critical role to play in taking some of that work off of those plates. The other thing I'll mention quickly is our Harlem site is across the street from a daycare, literally 35 feet from a daycare center. You would think that the daycare would be like just out for blood, asking for the center, our center, to close, when in fact they're one of our most staunch defenders in the public realm. How is that? Why is that? How can such a busy overdose prevention center coexist with a daycare program in 2024 today? It's for a couple reasons. It's because we meet each other's needs. So one of the things we're doing is creating jobs for the parents of those children, and we also have leadership at the daycare who has been in Harlem for many, many years, since the 80s, who has watched this crisis unfold on their doorstep for decades. So this idea of collective responsibility and collaboration, we didn't cause the overdose crisis, we are here to redress it, and we want to do that in partnership with the other people who are impacted by the crisis, including families, educators, et cetera. Another thing we did was host interns from the local high school a block and a half away from our site in Washington Heights. These are people who, young people who want to go into medicine or public health, who are getting really valuable exposure to harm reduction and other learning opportunities through the presence of an OPC in their community. So seeing the OPC and the introduction of these services as a value add to the community, not a detraction. Next slide, please. Through the outward-facing work, of course, we need to keep our parks and public spaces clean and safe for everyone, and this is a part of the public injection diversion program, which is really central to the ethos of an overdose prevention center. None of the supplies that we give out in the OPC leave the room, it all stays in the room and is safely disposed of in the room. But the outward-facing programming is taking care of whatever use is continuing to happen outside, because our sites are not 24 hours yet. So since launch, they diverted over 2.5 million units of hazardous waste from parks and public spaces in the neighborhoods where we operate. So continuing to feed people into the program who are still out in community and really delivering that emergency-on-the-ground care for both people who use drugs and other stakeholders in the neighborhoods where we operate. Next slide, please. And I think that's it. I think with the technical delays, we're far over 20 minutes. I really apologize, but if there are any questions, I'm very happy to receive them. Thank you so much. No, no worries. Thank you for your patience, and thank all of you as well. Thank you for the presentation. I will open it up to council questions now. Yes, Councilor Corin.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and bringing this up. And I'm a public health person, so I'm always here for harm reduction. I'm curious, I think, and this is more of a question really for like Athena and Phil and us for this conversation, but I think we are having ongoing opioid funding sort of conversations about what we're going to use for that. I'm wondering what the next steps are for when we're going to hear some of those additional recommendations, if, I'm hoping that this can be, and it seems like it's alluded to in the documentation that we've received so far, but not as specific and detailed as this presentation was. But I'm curious, when the next opioid conversation might be, and if we can also consider this in connection with that conversation, too.
Hi, my name is Athena Huckabee. I'm a public health professional here in Las Cruces, and I also sit on the Opioid Settlement Advisory Council. Those meetings are ongoing. We actually have a, we've been meeting monthly for several months, and we have a meeting coming up on November 4th, where what we are trying to line out is both the programs that we would like to see funded and the ways that we would like to track the success of those programs. So I think before we bring a full suite of recommendations to you, we want to understand how we're going to measure the success of those programs. We're hoping to line that out on November 4th and then be a little bit closer to having ironed-out recommendations that everyone agrees on to bring. That being said, I'm not sure that overdose prevention centers are necessarily, we are talking, of course, about harm reduction and recovery and many other things, but I don't think that we're talking specifically in that group about an overdose prevention center. That being said, I do, of course, envision that the opioid settlement funds could be very easily used to fund a pilot project of something of this nature.
Thank you. I was just wondering the context of all of those things, and I interpret the documents that I've read so far as being pretty open to this type of conversation, too. So I think, to me, that I just want to elevate that, I hope that we can continue this conversation in that context as well. So thank you, and thank you again for being on the committee and representing and bringing your expertise in a number of domains to that conversation. Thanks, Athena.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? Sure, go ahead, Councilor McClure.
Thank you for your presentation. I had a question, this might be more of a Brad slash chief story question. What are some legality issues that we might have with something like this in, is there a state issue, are there city issues that we might have that we need to overcome, or are there things, would this work in the city?
Brad, is that?
Mayor Protem, Councilor McClure. I don't want to go too deeply into the issue in an open forum, but of course, the issues that I'm always looking at are in regard to both liability and legality. What I can say here in the open forum today is that Chapter 24 of our state code at least appears to contemplate the legality of these overdose prevention centers, but it's also my understanding that the New Mexico State Legislature probably intends to introduce more robust legislation regarded to that, especially with regard to limitation of liability.
Thank you.
That's it? Anyone else? I just- Can I speak to that issue? Sure, Kayleen, go ahead. One quick thing to add to that. I see that the city attorney just made comment, you know, the city of New York had to, and core counsel at the city of New York had to grapple with this issue, and one of the concerns was being defunded at a federal level if the city of New York chose to support the sites, especially given that the governor was seeming to adopt a stance of non-interference but had no intention and wasn't signaling that she intended to legislate now or in the future. And if it's helpful, core counsel at New York City is very willing to talk to other jurisdictions who are thinking this through in terms of risk and how they mitigated those risks and the thought exercise that they undertook. So I'd be very happy to connect you if that's of interest. You probably have already reached out to them, but if you haven't, they're very happy to speak to other jurisdictions to help with that if helpful. Thanks, Kayleen.
I don't have any questions necessarily, I just have a couple of comments. I think, you know, I am looking forward to the conversation with the Opioid Settlement Advisory Committee on why or why not something like this should be on the list of recommendations. I think, you know, harm reduction strategies are vitally important in this moment, and more and more people are dying, and so we have to interfere as boldly and as best as possible. I think something like this bold, you know, would be best suited in coordination with our partners at the county, of course. I think it would function best that way, and of course, with a bunch of other stakeholders. So I do look forward to that conversation. I'm happy to have all of this information as we move into a potentially joint session with the county regarding the opioid settlement recommendations. And then the last thing I'll say is that there was, there have been a couple pieces of legislation introduced in the New Mexico State Legislature regarding these kind of harm reduction strategies, and one in 2021 and one in 2023. Neither of them have made it out of one of the chambers, from what I understand, just lack of time, but that there has been momentum around these and that there have been some statewide, other statewide advocates who've, you know, raised this conversation to the state level. So I also look forward to following any of that in the future, in the January 2025 legislative session, to see if any of these pieces of legislation are reintroduced. But for now, I think for me, I really appreciate having all of this information and understanding this, especially as we go into the opioid settlement joint work session with the county in potentially a few weeks or a couple months, I'm not sure. So, thank you. And thanks again, Kayleen. I will open it up to public comment now. So if there are folks who want to speak, come on up, and we will provide two minutes today.
Mayor Protem, Councilor Juan Garcia. This morning, there was an article in Cape Fox where various parks in Las Cruces were identified as drug havens for users, addicts, and overdoses. Something has to change because citizens of this community don't deserve this deplorable environment. You want more money for bed to better our parks, but it seemed to be for criminal activity. Although my initial reaction to OPC is no, and I did see the movie Loving the Age of Fentanyl, if, if these centers can be used as a conduit to treatment forced through the judicial system or volunteer, this may be an option to consider, and I stress, maybe. There have to be consequences, and not just an open-ended center to facilitate illicit drug use and further enable the already horrible human destruction going on. We can't have Las Cruces continue to be a haven and magnet for homeless, criminals, but potentially now with OPC's increased drug users in the city leading to even more criminal activity. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up. Two minutes, and don't forget to state your name.
Okay. Hi, my name is Dr. Francine Feinberg. I spent about 30 years working with women with substance use disorders and their children. I actually have some questions for Kayleen. One is, how are they funded? The other is, are they able to serve pregnant women? And is there any kind of service for people who have children so that they can go into your facility and not have to worry about where their children are?
Thank you, go ahead, Kayleen. Thank you. Just checking, the audio is still okay? Yep, we can hear you. Okay, great. Thank you for your question. For the first 18 months of our operation, we could not use a single cent of public money for the operation of the site. And then the New York City Department of Health and the city of New York figured out, following our recommendation, a time and effort budgeting system, and that's how the sites continue to be funded. A time and effort budget is a federally acknowledged budgeting system that separates activities of a program into eligible and ineligible activities against federal regulation and federal law. So when we look at the scope of work and the percentage of staff time in an overdose prevention center under this time and effort structure, we see that 98%, roughly 98% of staff labor is spent doing activities that are eligible under federal law and according to federal regulations. 2% of staff time or less are spent doing activities that are ineligible under federal law, and that really comes down to the act of observing consumption itself. Everything else is an evidence-based-
If there are folks who want to speak, come on up, and we will provide two minutes today.
Mayor Protam, Council Juan Garcia. This morning, there was an article in Cape Fox where various parks in Las Cruces were identified as drug havens for users, addicts, and overdoses. Something has to change because citizens of this community don't deserve this deplorable environment. You want more money for better, to better our parks, but it seemed to be for criminal activity. Although my initial reaction to OPC is no, and I did see the movie Loving the Age of Fentanyl, if, if these centers can be used as a conduit to treatment, forced through the judicial system, or volunteer, this may be an option to consider, and I stress, maybe. There have to be consequences and not just an open-ended center to facilitate illicit drug use and further enable the already horrible human destruction going on. We can't have Las Cruces continue to be a haven and magnet for homeless criminals, but potentially now with OPC's increased drug users in the city leading to even more criminal activity. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up. Two minutes, and don't forget to state your name.
Okay. Hi, my name is Dr. Francine Feinberg. I spent about 30 years working with women with substance use disorders and their children. I actually have some questions for Kayleen. One is, how are they funded? The other is, are they able to serve pregnant women? And is there any kind of service for people who have children so that they can go into your facility and not have to worry about where their children are?
Thank you. Go ahead, Kayleen.
Thank you. Just checking, the audio is still okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you for your question. For the first 18 months of our operation, we could not use a single cent of public money for the operation of the site. And then the New York City Department of Health and the city of New York figured out, following our recommendation, a time and effort budgeting system, and that's how the sites continue to be funded. A time and effort budget is a federally acknowledged budgeting system that separates activities of a program into eligible and ineligible activities against federal regulation and federal law. So when we look at the scope of work and the percentage of staff time in an overdose prevention center under this time and effort structure, we see that 98%, roughly 98% of staff labor is spent doing activities that are eligible under federal law and according to federal regulations. 2% of staff time or less are spent doing activities that are ineligible under federal law, and that really comes down to the act of observing consumption itself. Everything else is an evidence-based, widely-accepted public health intervention for people who use drugs. Even the observation of consumption is divided into passive and indirect observation. But when you think about it, if you only have to come up with discretionary money to fund 2% of staff time as opposed to 100% of staff time, suddenly you're funding options for a site like this become much broader. Rhode Island, as you know, is using opioid settlement funds. Now, New York is using public money to fund the sites, with the exception of the 2%, which is funded by discretionary or foundation money. So that's the funding piece. The budget for On Point, by the way, is 17 million for the entire organization. That's everything that I showed you. The OPCs themselves come in around 4 million. In terms of pregnant people or pregnant and parenting people who use drugs and people with dependents, yes, we have policies in place for both. I don't know that we have a ton of time to get into that, but know that policies do exist for both pregnant people who use drugs and pregnant and parenting people who use drugs. The OPCs in New York have successfully seen the birth of three children to parents who did their pregnancies through the OPC, and two of those parents are, still have full custody of their children, and for both, this is the first baby that was not apprehended by social services. So a huge testament to the role, the healthcare role, that these sites can play in interrupting addiction patterns for pregnant and parenting people who use drugs.
Thanks, Kayleen. Any other folks from the public? Come on down.
Thank you, city councilors. I'm Sarah Smith. I have some serious concerns about this and the message that it sends to the public. It's basically saying, okay, drugs are illegal, but you can come and do them right here. And I think that that creates a very interesting dynamic that basically says drugs aren't really illegal anymore because we will give you a place where you can come and do them. I'm very concerned that this potentially increases the number of people who are doing drugs in the community, as well as what kind of real metrics are used for this besides how many people didn't overdose? What impact does it have on the neighborhood? What impact does it have on the city? How many of these people actually become sober and rehabilitated versus just continuing on because now they have a comfortable, dignified place to do it? You may have heard that San Francisco is now being sued right now for a very similar situation, looking at the case, which is in federal court right now, which the city tried to shut down the case, and the judge has said, nope, the case can proceed. They are specifically having a lawsuit filed by residents and businesses that says, quote, lawmakers created a lawless living environment by enabling drug addicts and dealers. And they go on to say that the city's enabling of drug use has increased petty and violent crime in the neighborhood. Addicts support their habit by stealing, car breaks-in, robberies, burglaries, et cetera, along with all the other things that we often see in these types of neighborhoods. And it sounds very familiar to Desert Hope when it first opened, also increasing crime. So we've seen that happen. I'm very concerned about anything else the city might be funding that is going to have similar consequences for the people who live nearby and them having to then deal with having drug addicts in their neighborhood very regularly. Drug addicts basically as a magnet for them into that neighborhood and all of the things that go with that in terms of their public safety, their rights to having a safe neighborhood for their children, and a place to live. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Come on down.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Andrew Thomas. I'm going to speak as an expert in addiction on the fact that I'm in recovery. I won't speak for any of the recovery facilities that I've worked for, but for the community that I take part in. Most of the addicts and alcoholics that I speak with don't want to be addicts or alcoholics. It's not something they strive for. There's a severe fear of detox and a severe fear of getting sober. One of the things that medication-assisted treatment helps with is reducing that fear. If we can get people unafraid of detoxing from the pain and sometimes death, then what we can offer them is a chance, and that's what we're talking about here, is offering people a chance. They're not going to get it if they're just on the streets. They're not going to get it if they're hanging out in parks. Where they have the opportunity to get it is when they enter a facility where there are alternatives offered to them, and that's really what we're talking about here, opportunity. And for me, sobriety is opportunity. It's the opportunity to do all the things that I want to do in life instead of chasing after drugs and alcohol. And I'm very passionate about this, and I know Athena and the other members of this community are too. We're passionate about it for a reason, because we've seen it work. That may sound anecdotal, but if anecdote is all I have, and my testimony is that, then that's what I'm going to go by. I'm going to go by all of the people that I've seen it work for, and I think we need to really look into providing opportunities to people that they don't otherwise get. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come on down.
Hello, Mayor Protam, Council. My name is Fred Miller, and I wanted to say that it seems to me that people who end up in these overdose prevention centers, they're not people who are going to be trying to encourage other people to join them in doing drugs. If anything, they're people who are addressing it on a level. They're not going to be people who want to share it with new friends. That doesn't make sense to me. So I don't think that these would promote wider drug use. Seems to me prima facie, it should cut down on drug use, people being treated and such. Beyond that, in the presentation, Kayleen C. mentioned or discussed the use of small doses of naloxone instead of large doses, so that gets away from the problem of people getting treated out on the street, running off, refusing treatment, and then the naloxone wears off and the overdose comes back. I glanced over at Chief Smith when she brought that up, and it looked like that really hit home for him, like that's, that is worthwhile. That's something worth having. And in terms of parks and streets, that was part of what these prevention centers are taking care of. They're diverting the needles from the parks and streets. So, it sounds like a good thing to me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? What, come on down, folks, if you want to sit on the front row, if you want to speak, or maybe this is our last one.
Hi, my name's Liz Leono. I'm a person in recovery as well, and yeah, I came late, so I missed a little bit of the presentation, but overdose prevention centers, I was just looking at the National Institute of Health, and in their 20 years of data, they have zero deaths, and that's really important because having that method of not just prevention, but like assertive, like action for people who are dealing with such a pervasive addiction. New Mexico ranks really high in our statistics nationally for deaths of despair, which is alcohol, drug addiction, and suicide. It shows that nationally, we rank six for opioid use deaths or drug addiction deaths, and we rank four nationally for deaths by alcohol use, and as well, number four in deaths by suicide. We also are very heavy in ACEs, which is adverse childhood experiences, and research has also shown that folks who rank high in ACEs score, which that's a 10-question questionnaire that has had years, decades of studies in it, actually. So folks who answer yes for four or more of those questions have a significant, significantly higher propensity for drug and alcohol addiction. And this is really important to note because studies in ACEs have also shown that traditional methods may not always scratch the surface. Everything from like bariatrics to like therapy, much more assertive treatment is definitely needed, so.
Thank you, Liz.
Oh.
Thank you. All right, our last person, come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, city councilors, chiefs. My name is Tanika Sosa Gonzalez, and I'm a board-certified psychiatric mental health nurse. I also have extensive lived experience, and so I would like to start this discussion by saying that I appreciate the fact that we're bringing science into this and facts into this, because the reality is, is that this is a medical condition that affects D2 dopamine receptors and other receptors. So I think we should have a discussion about this like it's an illness. I also would say to my fellow Las Crucesans that we, and council, that we stop using words that are pejorative like addict. So three years ago, I lost my father, who had returned, who had returned to substance use after he lost his sister who was murdered at the hands of her son with schizophrenia. My dad died because he didn't know how to take his drugs. So, he's not an addict, he's my dad. There are faces to this, and there are people to this. And I will just say that when we had our discussion about shopping carts, Sarah Smith said, overall, these strategies aren't working, people need treatment and a safe space to go. And Chief Story encouraged us to not be all or nothing, but to have a balanced approach. And so I think that we use and have this discussion using science and compassion and stop feeding into stigma, because really what stigma does is it gives people who feel insecure and insufficient the opportunity to otherize people in their community so that they feel better about themselves. So the next time you walk past someone and you want to look at them as just a junkie or just an addict, they belong to somebody. They have a family who loves them. And so I would just encourage us to elevate this discussion and to really look at the science behind it and to be open to talking about how to do new and different things. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanika. Great way to wrap this up. Thank you very much to our three presenters. I appreciate it and look forward to continued conversations on this. And if there's nothing else, that is our last item, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved, Graham.
Seconded, Corin.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Councilor McClure?
Yes.
Councilor Matisse is absent. Councilor Graham?
Yes.
Councilor Coran?
Yes.
Councilor Flotis?
No, I just got here. Well, I guess, yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
And the mayor is absent.